Okay, good. Thank you very much and welcome to council Monday, April twenty twenty second, twenty twenty four. Call me toward at four P M. As always, just wanted me to silence off their mobile devices. Any additions to the list today agenda today? Hearing none, I have a motion here, council hereby accepts the agenda as presented on Monday, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Meeting regular media council is so amended. Move by Council Lake, second by Council P. Thank you. All in favor? Harry, thank you. Any declarations of interest today? Hearing none. I have a motion here, the council hereby adopt some minutes that were presented during the meeting of council held on Monday, April the eighth, twenty twenty four, so amended. Move by. Council Winner, second by Council Lake, no errors or omissions in those minutes. All in favor? Harry, thank you. Moving right to our student council reports. Council Chris Shane.
So last week on Wednesday, our Badenton team, Badenton players went to Wawa, where six of them advanced to Enlos and Thunder Bay, which they'll be playing this Wednesday. And we also have a set date for Matha High School Palau, which will be June seventh. So we're really looking forward to that.
Awesome. And you're looking forward to going to Thunder Bay in a couple of days to present at Noma as well?
A little nervous, maybe?
Council Redden, please.
Our school board is doing its trustee elections, which is a leadership opportunity for students at the board level. And they will be grade tens that will be on the team for grade eleven and twelve.
So that's a good point. So if you don't mind me asking, so with your roles on our student, as a student council, on our council, are you showing back into the student council, providing the opportunity for younger participants within high school? Maybe doing a little presentation through maybe Council Lake as a teacher to encourage more youth to get involved within the school systems of the weekends?
Yeah, that's on, I think we are going to talk about that Noma bit is to kind of inform the rest of the attendees about how to get the younger voice active.
Sure. So what about you as peers within your own system, going back to the Badenton High and promoting that within the high school area for the youth that are coming into next year, September's enrollment and going into grade eleven, ten to eleven, saying get involved in student council?
It's definitely something that I could start bringing up more. I don't think I personally have mentioned it to too many people who have the opportunity. But it is aware that I'm on it and that it's on it too.
We can do it. We can do a nice presentation.
So I know that Council Lake is going to take on the graduation on behalf, but maybe there's an opportunity to have one of the two student councils make a little mention at that opportunity time because everybody's in the, in the crowd then, right? Give you a little more stage time, a little more stage time. Right? Maybe it's just an opportunity just to get more engagement from our youth in our, our school.
You know, traditionally, we've done a greeting from the town.
Right.
It's either you or I.
Yeah.
Might be nice for, I like that. Maybe, maybe the student council is going to do the greetings from the town.
Yeah, or both.
Yeah.
Both of you. Just going to have to say a few words on behalf of the municipality and encourage more youth to get engaged in our youth council system. Could that be something we work on?
Yeah, definitely.
Awesome.
Tell the school exactly what you think.
Okay, great. So working through, through that, you know, our message is pretty simple. On behalf of the municipality, we can work some more forwarding through Mr. Skorczewski. And then you can present on behalf of town, but also encouraging other youth to get involved in the system because you guys have been moving on. And then we'll look at current new councils next year. So awesome. Thanks. And then enjoy your time at Thunder Bay at Noma as well because it's a learning curve. And I think Council Lake mentioned before the meeting that there was going to be quite a few ministers there and hopefully we can have a little interaction because that's what it's all about. And also AMO's student council representative is going to be there as well. We'll work with him, but the one I worked with, Thomas, is not available to attend. So it's going to be a good overall view of, of youth engagement at the normal problem as well.
Those positions with AMO, are they high school students or?
No, the university typically going on to political science, political history, masters in that system. And then come in to understand what's all over from the municipal level. So it's been really well accepted. And that all started actually pre-COVID when we did a presentation at AMO in two thousand and eighteen. Then AMO took it on as a, you know, as an opportunity for, for the AMO organization to have youth engagement more so. And so we're almost lead on that. So we're connected on that. Okay. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Up next, we have a C E report on land disposition, Mr. Skorczewski.
So town bylaw number sixteen seventeen is the bylaw that regulates the sale and dispositions of municipal land. It is the duty of the clerk to report to council from time to time with respect to land which may be considered surplus, the requirements of the municipality, expression of interest of municipal lands, and the recommended method of disposing of the lands considered for disposition. It is also a responsibility of the clerk to obtain an independent appraisal prior to consideration by council to sell leased or otherwise disposed of lands, except in such cases where an appraisal is not required by statute and in the opinion of the clerk, not necessary or advisable in the circumstances. Administration has been approached by Bitagong who wish to purchase four properties that would support their cultural center development in the sturdy coal area. They're on the attached abstract of four different personal identification numbers. Administration does not envision any future uses of these lands by the municipality as they are assumed through an unpaid access forfeiture. The method to be used to dispose of lands for the municipality includes, but is not limited to public auction of a ten hundred, direct sale, land exchange, call for proposals, and listen to property with a real estate broker. Council made by bylaw resolution establish an acceptable minimum reserve bid, fix any other term or condition of the sale, direct that the sale be subject to requirements of agreement of purchase and sale, and delegate to the clerk if there is set alternative conditions of said sale. Administration is proposing that council utilize a direct sale method, that an amount of one dollar be the fixed purchase price for the four land parcels, and that an agreement of purchase and sale be transacted between Bitagong and the town. A land appraisal is not being recommended at this time by administration. Town's legal council will draft the appropriate purchase and sale agreements for this transaction. Financially, a one dollar sale fee will be recognized through this transaction. And council's options today undertake the direct land sale with Bitagong for the legal properties as described. The C O clerk authorized to transact the agreement of purchase and sale or do not approve the request at this time. Administration recommends that option A be approved and that by law twenty seventy five be approved, authorizing the incorporation of the town marathon to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale with Bitagong for four land parcels located in the sturdy coal area and that the C O clerk be authorized to complete the transaction on behalf of the municipality.
Thank you for an overview of that report. I do have a motion here, council hereby accepts the report, land disposition of Bitagong is now be as presented. Further than the incorporated by law be approved later in this meeting around the rise of the corporation of town marathon to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale of Bitagong is now four land parcels located in sturdy coal area and that the C O clerk be authorized to complete the transaction on behalf of the municipality. Move back. Council Lake, second by council, with other questions, comments. Council Lake.
Uh, yeah, just one. This goes back to Spence Bell was on the museum committee when I was on it a million years ago. And he'd done a bunch of research on the Angler Creek Prison of War camp, the foundations of which I think are close to some of those parcels. So I just, I mean, I certainly support, you know, working with our partners, but just ensuring that if some of that historical stuff is protected and Spence had always wanted a plaque on the highway and some sort of recognition from the government. So I know that work is kind of stalled, but it would just be nice to make sure we recognize that that was kind of an important place in the history of Marathon and that it's not going to get, you know, that it'll still be accessible to people if they need to get it. And then my other comment would just be like, you know, I've walked that trail my whole life. Uh, just ensuring that, again, love the partner and I think it's a great idea, but just ensuring that people still have access to some of those traditional trails that we walk as, as people.
Yeah, but certainly we'll do the research with respect to Angler. We definitely know we have that on file. So we can transpose that over top of the personal identification numbers to ensure that we know exactly where it's located. And then I think with respect to, you know, the other point around traditional access, that can certainly be one of the conditions of the agreement of purchase and sale to ensure that, you know, that is still allowed. Obviously, you know, the key reason we were approached with respect to these lands is, you know, they impact the ability to access the sturdy coal site, which of course is where the cultural center development is going. But this is a traditional use area to access, you know, whether it be hunting, fishing, you know, the high roll lines. So we can certainly fix that as a condition and have that discussion with, with responsible.
Council Lake.
And just one more. The other group that I think of in that area is the group seven trails.
Yeah.
Committees are just making sure that we're, that, that trail that they're building isn't at odds with what each does, what we do with that land, that they can close to.
Absolutely. So we've had the discussion with the group of seven and as you know, we've funded this year and, and their continued trail development. The plan is to continue on all the way to maize through the site at the Pick Island viewing site on top of that hill. But the bridging from the end of, just at the corner of the, I guess would be a, not, not sturdy. I can't see it. My eye is not that good. But there, the crossover running to sturdy, there's a very small portion there. That's similar to that Duncan Creek has been put over that type of footbridge. That was primarily the part of the recommendation we made to them when they were asking for the funding to continue looking at that expansion. Now we bring it right to sturdy coal. So there is there. The trail goes right to the edge of that waterway, but there's probably here through the desert of water. And then of course, as you mentioned about the, the English speaking termin camp as well as the Japanese internment camp, both of those are recognized as historical sites. I'm sure our First Nations neighbors will do the respect that. And also that we heard from Chief Machado, he also spent a lot of time there as a youth. His father worked at the site and helped maintain the internment camp for the prisoners of war. So I'm sure that that discussion could be very clearly identified and that will be recognized as a, as a historical site. And as Mr. Skorczewski is simply just for access to their cultural center site on the sturdy coal beach area.
It'd be a really cool.
Yeah.
Cool site. Lots of history in there, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Is there intended use just like trail access or road access? Do they plan on building like any structures on the land?
In my discussions with, with the C E O, there's no intent to build a permanent road or any of that type. This, this just ensures that, you know, there is an access down there.
Yep. Okay. If you have the moment, second, there's permission, call a question, okay. Harry, thank you. Up next, we have a report on the operating capital budgets. Mr. Verbal is going to come down and highlight the, what they've been working on with council and administration for the last several months. That's new, sir.
That's been in there in council. The draft twenty twenty four operating capital budget was presented at a special meeting of council on January twenty ninth. Since that time, council's input as well as additional information and details have been incorporated into the budget. Overall objective of the twenty twenty four budget is to maintain the current level of service and goods while keeping an increase to the tax levy to a minimum. Due to the pandemic, the province deferred reassessment and have continued for twenty twenty four. Property values in this tax year is the current value assessment value as of January first, twenty sixteen. There is no change from the twenty twenty three property values other than supplemental middling and reduction notes from impact that occurred last year. The overall assessment increased by zero point three four percent. The decrease to the residential class, which is seven percent of the total assessment, was minimal zero point zero two percent. The multi-res class increased by four hundred and twelve thousand dollars with the completion of the apartment building on McCullough Drive. The mining class decreased by five hundred and sixty three dollars, which is six percent of the total assessment with the updated employee allocation on the Himala Mine property. Budget being presented today contains the bundles of programs and services that council has agreed will be delivered to residents of Marathon during twenty twenty four. The operating requirements are five million four hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. In addition to programs and services, four hundred and three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars of capital works is contained in this budget. Grants, debt, and reserves will fund the majority of the work, but two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars will be paid from the tax levy. The province has not changed or, the province has set the educational levy for the various classes. There is no change to their rates. The combined education levy to be collected on behalf of the various school boards is estimated to be four hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. The tax levy of five million six hundred and seventy one thousand dollars is an increase of four point eight percent from twenty twenty three. Breaking it down by class, the residential class will see an increase of four point nine nine percent to the property tax. So this increase, if you consider the median average of a house is ninety two thousand dollars, those people will see a hundred and thirty dollars increase over the year. Commercial class was an increase of five point nine percent. Industrial class was a decrease of zero point zero four percent. Overall, the increase is a four point six percent to the total property tax because of assessment. Major changes since twenty twenty nine, since January twenty nine meeting are categorized as follows. In capital, we're, the replacing of the underground fuel tanks at Public Works is being deferred to the future as a reduction of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The administration has purchased a used vehicle. This removes the need for operating maintenance of nine thousand dollars. Thirty five thousand dollars was added because of what the actual insurance premiums were. Changeover in providers to avoid crew benefits resulted in a savings of forty six thousand dollars. We are recognizing potential sale of land and surplus equipment. That's a savings of seventy five thousand dollars or not a save, but a reduction of the tax levy of seventy five thousand dollars. We envision spending ten thousand dollars for consulting work to finalize the mill site environmental study and to meet provincial regulations on asset management plan. The administration plans to engage consultants, but use government funding for the net effect on the levy as an increase of twenty three thousand dollars. We're forecasting less, we're forecasting less need for votes of five thousand dollar saving. We received an updated notice on the amount of the recycling grant from the province. That's more revenue of sixty eight thousand dollars. And we're forecasting higher tipping than the revenue of eighteen thousand dollars. As discussed at the last council meeting, we concluded annual financial support to Wilson Memorial General Hospital of ten thousand dollars over ten years towards the construction of a long-term care wing. In recreation, council agreed to proceed with the design base of the active living center on Peninsula Harbor of two point nine million dollars. It will be funded a hundred percent from debt, so the impact on the tax levy is nil. But the levy does include ninety thousand dollars because of the interest on the loan. We deferred purchasing a snowplow for a recreation pickup. That's savings of ten thousand. We've also deferred nets and line painting at the outdoor rink, indoor the tennis court, five thousand dollar savings. We are proposing an increase or we forecast an increase in arena, lake view community hall, campground and golf course, which will see additional revenue of twenty five thousand dollars. Additional revenue for the golf course of ten thousand dollars will be for sponsorship. And we're foregoing portable washrooms at the golf course, saving us five thousand dollars. We plan to reduce the purchase of promotional items, saving twenty five hundred dollars. Limit the community development assessment on to just the planter box. That's a savings of five thousand dollars. Do not pursue the gold trip project, which is a fifty fifty project with Ontario Heritage Fund funding, savings at fifty thousand dollars. And we're confirming the allocation of the accommodation tax revenue to group of seven trails, group, the snowcrews and cross countries. That's an additional forty thousand dollars to what was discussed in January. So the options are approved, the twenty twenty four operating and capital budget as presented, or approve them with amendments. Administration recommends that option A be approved and that by law two zero seventy six adopting the twenty twenty four operating and capital budget be approved as presented.
Thank you for that presentation. I do have a motion here, council hereby accepts the attached report of recommendation of twenty twenty four operating capital budgets. For the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, for being twenty twenty four operating capital budget. Move by. Council Lake, second by council, with other questions. Mr. Verbal.
Yeah, I think the question that just needs to be explained is how is it that if you're working, you have an increase of four point nine nine percent? But if you're a company, you have an increase in taxes of four point three percent. It doesn't make any sense, right? It doesn't make any sense. There's better explanation of how taxes, fairness goes. So it's, it's based on information, based on information we're seeing. And there's our financial foundation called municipal properties, assessing corporations or corporations, but on fact, and also in the matter, we see the information from the corporation on their employees, on their employees. Their specific them reduced and they're being retained on their, on their, by, by.
There's two things to the industrial tax. Obviously, I've announced thirty, I think that the town would work with the revenue for over a year or a quarter on the miners, the residents of the miners. We did come to this, I think we come to those sixteen cities that is assessed properties on the property. But because as Mr. Verbal clarified, there has been a reassessment, but we're meeting against all properties of the problems on the trail.
properties, all the problems on the trail, we just don't want the guy to have the, the effect on everything itself, right? More than a year of revenue at the top of it, with various things that we need to have special, to call special, for our purposes, to be utilized, to be in tax, assessed properties, and then the second part of that, and the third part of that, which will get searched in the government, is the employee location, as big part of our, is identifying those employees that some of these are searched, and some of them are not, it seems, with the impact, and getting identified with clients, and to have those clients that were then drawn on the 4161 number, they still are, they're attacking our, our community, so we can go out and catch a few, we have to get that addressed, that residents here as we can have a, a revenue cover, and then, 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 and and then, 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 once we get that final assessment update adjustment, we can go back and argue the mining sector, the residential sector, there's going to be a lot of confusion, you know, there's a, about this description, the, the, you know, pure, you know, most right for ourselves, our assessment's at 300,000, 200,000, whatever, whatever, it's, 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 it's every, but, 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 so that'll be an education. So we've asked that, that, Charlotte has been very excited, saying that she will come anytime and discuss with our council, but it isn't so great on two, to make understanding of that one set of fact, this, this.
Impact has, has, has been, has been, for four years, the province has said not to real assessments, but then compare them, so there may be, so, so, maybe, I'll insert that, let's get the numbers updated from 2016. There shouldn't be a long time to get that, that, however, the ramifications will be huge.
Yeah, eye opening. Yeah, totally, it will be followed, so it'll be a real, a real, a real, a prime example. We don't want the mines paying more of their career share, we pay their, their, we pay them, we pay them, we pay them, to make sure they are paying their, 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 their purchase, the assessed value of the process of, of ground. And as we all, as we've passed, we have the, familiar with the path, that's all taxed underground, but yet we cannot track the mining sector because of the signing act, the specific taxation, systemic taxation underground, you know, like the garage is and workshops, everything, they're not that, so there's a lot of work with that, again, so we can look at, or, 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 sure, they're not, they're not, they're not, they're not, they're not. Absolutely. Yeah, I, I think, I, I, nobody can say this, nobody can say this, nobody can say this, but I appreciate the work, administration, and, and obviously, it's gone a bit, it's not paying, saving, not paying, but I think that it, you know, the cost of, the cost of, you know, the cost of, and, 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 it matters to people that, 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 they don't, they don't, they don't, and, 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 I think that it's good explanation, that good explanation can't raise some classes, cast some classes, and, 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 for some people, there's going to be some people that, 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 that.
Well, I think you heard from Mr. Verbal, it's on the average, it's on the average forty dollars a year, for some, 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 for[915.44]